Actually, starting with the public hearings this evening. So let me open up the public hearing for the record. Today is Monday, May 2, 2022. We are in the City Hall Auditorium. Members of the City Council present and attending in person are Councilwoman Rowett, Councilman Manichia, Councilwoman Hona, and Councilman Waldron. I believe participating via Zoom is, is it, is Councilman Oliver?
No.
No. I know that he was once again exposed to COVID and maybe calling in earlier, later. All right, so I will go ahead and open this public hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to solicit public comment regarding a smoking ordinance. Before I request comments from the public, Carol, do we have a public notice to be ready to the record?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen of the City of Torrington will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 2, 2022, starting at 6:30 PM in the City Hall Auditorium, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to solicit public comment regarding a smoking ordinance. All interested parties are invited to attend and be heard. The full text of the proposed changes is on file and open to the public for inspection in the office of the city clerk, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, dated at Torrington, Connecticut, this 22nd day of April, 2022.
Thank you, Carol. So at this point, I would ask the public if they have comments regarding this ordinance to speak into the microphone and provide your address, please. Of course.
Kevin Hayes, I understand the rules for it, and they're really great on a lot of it. You know, like the park, closing Main Street, no smoking during that time in close quarters. But there are some sections that if you're down at the city park by yourself and you have your kids playing and you choose to smoke, do you really need a police officer or somebody from the park and rec department to come over and say, oh, no smoking? And along that, just along that line, so kindly don't over govern the smoking status. You, I smoke an occasional cigar, and I'll tell you, I go down to the park during the summer, I listen to the concert, yeah, I'm sitting there with a cigar way in the back. And it's a okay. And if you wish to truly observe that type of thing, go to Brody Park in New Hartford. Their park is packed, packed to the gills. And they are, you'll find a couple of guys in the back with a cigar, their wine, their cheese, their wives, kids playing. So kindly just don't over govern it. And really make it so specific that you can't even go down. That would be my only suggestion to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Still open to the public for comment. There being no additional comments, just because it is a public hearing, I do need to provide every opportunity for the public to comment if it decides that the, if anyone decides at the last minute they want to go on the record. So I will ask it three times before I close the meeting. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address the council regarding the smoking ordinance? Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak to the council regarding the ordinance? Seeing and hearing none, I will declare this public hearing closed. I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. That being the only public hearing on the agenda for this evening, I'm going to move now into the regular council agenda. It's going to take me one meeting to get accustomed to the new format. So for the record, I will open the regular council meeting. It may, May 2, 2022. It is now 6:35 PM. And before we do the regular meeting, could we please stand and pledge the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Item number one on the agenda is, will be a roll call vote to accept the new smoking ordinance for the City of Torrington. I'll need a motion.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron. Are there questions or comments on the proposed ordinance?
Just the kind of, you know, as a member or the chair of the ordinance committee, we've been working hard, particularly with our police department. And I am a little surprised with this particular ordinance that we didn't get a few more comments, since, you know, it does include as 176-3. Is that the right section? Yes, you know, the designation of smoking and tobacco. But it's also a reflection on the new law in terms of having to do with legalization of marijuana. So hemp is included in that. So more than ever, I think the smoking ordinance sort of being in place at this point is critical. So I'm hoping that we are able to garner the support of our members.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
I do, just a question, I'm trying to figure it out. I think I saw on the cannabis law, but I could be wrong. Are we obligated to allow a place in public? If we are, do we have to, do we have any obligation to allow a place in public for, in parks for people to be able to consume it?
The municipalities of 50,000 and higher in population are required to provide public space. Yes.
Did you guys have discussion about all smoking, about like, do you think there will be an area in every park? Did you talk with the police department about, because to the gentleman's point, enforcement, you know, extra responsibilities for the police at this point, with their staffing issues is probably not high on our priority list. But have you guys thought about where there would be signs?
Well, not signage, but I think on all of our ordinances, fortunately, we have either the chief there or the chief and Sergeant Waltis. Pronouncing his last name right, I should be. Both of them attend, knowing, you know, to your point, enforcement is a part of this ordinance. And are they able to do it? So they're, they have some ideas beyond, you know, once we pass the ordinance, probably the signage. But, you know, we pass a lot of ordinances, you know, to your point, that enforcement's always been my question, you know, how will we be able to enforce it? Whether it be the noise ordinance or any other ordinance. But this one, I think more, more importantly, the police felt an urgency to get this passed now.
I understand.
Yeah. I don't have any further comments.
Armand. Yeah. Mayor, may I?
Please, I'm sorry. Yes.
And I, I think I remember one of our discussions, I think also was littering, I think was one of the issues, if I remember. Also, it's not just the smoking but just the littering of the butts, which is probably less than it used to be. But there are certain concentrated areas where that's an issue.
Because we did talk about receptacles, you know, where we might be able to have them, should we have them, who will clean them out? I mean, it just got to be complicated. So we didn't even put any of that, you know, in the ordinance.
I would only add, was it three, three years ago that the Mayor's Committee on Youth also presented in consultation with TAP, presented to the council a request to create a non-smoking park environment? At the time, vaping was the focus and the big concern. I thought they did a very well articulated presentation. And while the council, I think, didn't move it to the ordinance at that time, I'm quite pleased to see the council considering it at this time.
Is the chief on? Maybe we could, I don't know.
No, he, I'm sorry, he is away for, but I'm not sure if Sergeant Waltis or Captain Barone or Captain Gonzalez are on.
They're very attentive to every ordinance.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions or comments before I do the roll call? Hearing none, I'll roll call to Councilman Waldron first.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hona?
Hi.
Councilman Manichia?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Rowett?
Yes.
That's four in favor, none opposed. This ordinance passes. And at this point, the clerk's office will do the appropriate notices, and we have a 30-day appeal period that starts, so. All right, moving into item two. This would be a motion to open the meeting to public regarding general matters. Doesn't, it's not specific to the public.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're open to the public. Before I call the public up, I did just get a text message. Councilman Oliver is on the line right now. And for the record, he is saying he's voting in favor of the ordinance. Okay. Open to the public, anyone from the public wishing to address the council on general matters? Mr. Hayes?
The subject I do have notes. But the first question I have, oh, first Kevin Hayes, is that $300-plus thousand that was originally allocated to go to the city employees, has it been allocated to something else? Because that really dictates where I have to say next. If it hasn't been allocated to other things, I keep going back to some basics. Sending out information to all the city residents. Because on some of the things, you expect a different response, but you're doing the same thing. Meaning on the recycling, there's not enough information given out. And you say, well, you could just go on the internet. All two things, one, the city website isn't that comfortable or easy to use. And the other is a lot of people don't. I have friends and all, and business people that just say, I'm not doing it. I watched a very educated person throw leaves into a recycle bin. And I says, what are you doing? He said, well, it's wood, that's where paper came from. I says, but that's not a manufactured product, it's not reprocessed. So there's no information going out. There's no information on the bulk pickup. Well, you just look around the city and you say, well, eventually they'll find out. Well, just travel around the city, you see it there. No information being broadcast. You just passed an ordinance on smoking. No, how is anybody going to know about this? Every six months, do a mailer, especially with recycling, with changes, every household. And then your information will be out. So that's one way to use some of the money. The other day, again, I'm going to keep pushing for it, and that is at the bus stop. Go down by the libraries, get a coffee, go there during the week and sit there. In the rain, mother, two children. Because the city won't spend eight, $10,000 on a three-sided bus stop. Think of the end user. How will it best benefit the residents of Torrington when we spend our money? Will we get the best product and result from it? And yes, who will be using it? Everybody can use it that uses the bus. Do whatever it takes to get the pool up and running this year. If you need to pay, you can't get lifeguards, pay more. That gets a lot of use. You just go up there any day during the summer, it gets a lot of use, very beneficial to the end user. So that's that, the bus stops. Truly support the athletics and the groups in Torrington. Torrington really does it. They say, we have the Forbes Flyers. Two years ago, Forbes Flyers says, we have no place to practice because we have to rent the school. Well, Forbes Flyers took in students from other schools, so they couldn't just use Forbes School anymore. That's, well, that's not promoting youth activism, youth in Torrington. The person two months ago came up and said, I have to rent the field for baseball. So that means the youth activities are really not any part of Torrington. They are self-supporting, they have to get sponsors. And they take that sponsor money to pay for the field, to pay for their uniforms. So to start to really sponsor the youth activities. Take some of that money, put it on youth activities. Truly support the youth activities. And if you don't think these, these teams are busy with soccer, baseball, go to any field, go to middle school, go anywhere, they're packed, they are packed. But truly support, cut their costs, because who does that? Everybody does it, high-wage earners and low-income wage earners. Why? Because it's a good activity for the end user. And then, again, on the London Nugget River, you have beautiful walkways. Throw some flower seeds out there, $1,000 of flower seeds that grow over here, sprinkle them along. But over on Hotchkiss Place, which is off of Midgeon Avenue, there is a land trust there that goes along one side of the Nugget River. I saw on Facebook, I'm going to go check this out. And through their labor, it's, oh, not much longer than this room, a little bit longer, beautiful little area. I go, wow, that is sweet. Give them $10,000. Here's some planting, buy some material, put fish in the river. So when kids come down with your family, you can fish in the river and catch something. I don't know if the trout association does put fish in there. And even if they do, put more. Why? Youth activity, parent, child, youth activity, end user gets a great benefit from it. So there is a few examples of how to take that $400,000 and truly get the most benefit, not to an adult, but for the kids. And that's my suggestion, stay right on notes. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, still open to the public? Seeing and hearing no other comments, I'll move on to item number three. I will entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from April 4, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Hona. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item four, 3B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the April 18, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
I heard Councilman Waldron and Councilwoman Rowett. Questions or comments on these minutes? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to authorize, to authorize the waiver of the city bid process and purchase of the fire department uniforms from Fairfield Uniform Company of Bridgeport, Connecticut, for $14,033.90, half of the state contract, number 17PSX0024, pending Board of Safety approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. Questions on the motion?
The waving there.
Yes.
Waving the bid process, you know, is always, you know, you always like to have a bid process. It's there for a purpose, but I'm confident, or any must be confident that there are very few companies that actually issue these uniforms.
So the state does a bid process. And through that bid process, comes out with this lowest offer. So this is a situation where our fire department, we usually go out to bid on our own. We usually lock the price down for a year. And then as we need new uniforms with new recruits or changes in the department, however, we were outside of that year that they held the price. So instead of going out to bid again for a two-month period of time to the end of the fiscal year, we found that it was just as competitive and economical to bid off of the state or purchase off the state's contract. Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Chief, is anything here?
Oh.
Yeah.
And here's Chief Trip. Anything to add to that?
No, Mayor, Fairfield's been our contractor for the last couple of years. Unfortunately, with COVID, like we've noticed with everything else nowadays with our supply chain issues and inflation rates, unfortunately, he could not meet our bid. He has been all along. And talking with Todd down at Fairfield, he's been great to us. He's been very competitive in all his pricing. And he's honored those pricings with us and done extra stuff for us. But unfortunately, this year with COVID and the affecting everything, he was not able to do that. We didn't have the time to go for the extension, because, you know, we can go back to the council for an extension for an additional year or two. And unfortunately, he couldn't do that just because of all the manufacturers and supplies increasing all the prices, he just couldn't eat it. He is on a state contract, he does a lot of state department corrections, DEP. I think he does the Marshals Office in a bunch of cities, Greenwich. I know he has his Waterbury, I think, and a bunch of big departments that he has. So he does the state contracting pricing. And we are, this is only a one-time thing, we're going to go to bid. I've been in touch with Finance and Penny, and we're processing our, our list to go out to bid for July 1.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. If there are no other questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five. I'll entertain a motion in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-474, subsection B, for discussion and possible vote on a successor collective bargaining agreement by and between the City of Torrington and Local 2212 of Council 4 ASME AFL-CIO. This is our Public Works employees' contract period from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2025, as described in Attorney La Mer's letter dated April 28, 2022. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Hona. And I do have Jamie La Mer, Attorney La Mer, on the call. Are there questions regarding the contract terms or, or anything else? No?
But I'm very pleased to finally present this to the council. We've been negotiating since last March. We found ourselves at an impasse in September. We started an arbitration process, turned to a mediation process. And I think we are now all in a place where we are finding ourselves comfortable with this deal.
And I would just add that we're always grateful for our negotiations teams, both on management side and labor side. These are always tough conversations when it comes to contract. And I do appreciate everybody's due diligence on negotiations. So if there are no questions, I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to award and execute a contract agreement and all construction change orders for the City South Reconstruction Project 2022.1 with Asphalt Repair Solutions, Inc. of Oxford, Connecticut, in the amount of $995,727.75, including expenditures of up to $99,575. This will be funded through the Payment Management Program Bond Funding. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Manichia. And Paul Cousins, our city engineer and deputy public works director is here if there are questions on the project. I would only add that last week, for the last, well, two public works projects, Mr. Cousins has taken the time to hold public informational Zoom meetings for anybody that may be impacted by the construction projects, which I think is helpful, that these, these neighborhoods in the South End that will see this construction happening and their front door this summer have an opportunity to speak to it. So if there are no questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to waive the city bid process and accept the Borough of Nuggetuck contract 12-23 for the, by two minutes, surface treatments, crack ceiling, hot-in-place asphalt recycling, and chip ceiling expiring June 30, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. And again, questions?
I just have a question. Is this, I was a little bit confused about how we would pick up a Nuggetuck bid and how that, how we can do that and why we would.
So Paul, do you want to talk a little bit about the competitive process?
Right, so depending on, depending on our needs, in this case being the need for micro-surfacing and chip sealing, we reached out to various municipalities that have done the bid process in order to streamline the process for us, so that we don't have to go to bid. And if we have a contractor that has worked with us before and, and we've been pleased with their work, then we can, we can go with these, these types of bids. So.
So.
And it's a competitive price that we've, that we've researched. So that, that's another reason why we, we, we do this.
So is it, it's not exactly the same bid, because it's not exactly the same work? Or is it the same money that Nuggetuck is getting? Like, you know, I'm trying to, you know.
So all we're doing is basically using their contract and the contractor that they solicited. We're funding it ourselves. And the, the funding for that comes from roads and drainage budget from, from the street department. And it's based on what their funding allows. And between myself and Bill Mayers, we decide what roads require the work. So.
So in accordance with state procurement laws, we can do this. I think that's the question you're asking.
Yeah, we've done this several times before.
Yes.
I mean, it sounds, it makes sense. I, I, I was trying to understand, like, they, so a contractor gives a bid to Nuggetuck and says, I can do the work for this price.
Yeah.
And just go to that contractor and say, you gave this price to Nuggetuck. So you assume you're going to give it to us? Is that, or they have to give it to us for the same price?
Yes, it's, it's the same contract with the same pricing. So we know what the pricing is going into this and knowing that it's competitive.
And we can only do this if the council agrees to waive the bid process.
Yes.
And utilize a competitive contract that used a similar competitive bidding process.
With permission from, from the municipality that we're taking, that we're using, piggyback, we call it piggybacking.
I understand.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Not leapfrogging, frogging, but piggybacking. But I, but I'm sorry, go ahead, Armand.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
Well, I, yeah, on the comment, I would think that there's probably more efficiencies, you know, overall, in doing this.
Well, it is, it's certainly easier than for us to write the spec and then to put the bid out and go through the whole process. It does streamline it somewhat for, for my office.
So I know this is done before, what other projects, you know, have you done this with?
Last year, we did it for a chip ceiling.
Okay.
We had Seymour Seal Coating do our chip ceiling. Last year, we did that, that worked the same way. That was, I think, from the Southbury contract, I believe, we piggyback from them, so. Yeah.
You would have.
And it's the same processes as going to the state bid, the state portal as well, using state, the, the, the state contracts, it's kind of the, it's the same process where they did the, they did the bid process. Where they did the, they did the bid process.
Now, I see that it's per ton, I'm just like, that makes more sense.
I was waiting for.
I was thinking about like, how are our roads as long as Nagatuck? So we need as much as, now I understand what it just.
It doesn't fit for every project, but by tonnage, by weight, by volume, it's the same.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Do we have experience with this contractor?
With this contractor?
Yeah.
Yes.
We do.
Yes, they've worked with us before and we're pleased with their work. So that, that, that's another reason. We know we get, get a good contractor that, that, that we can trust and rely on. So.
So Paul, as I'm looking at this motion, it does not name the contractor.
Yeah.
It's, the con, it names the contract and in the contract.
Repair Solutions.
In the contract award, the supporting documents, it calls out the contractor being Indus Seal Coating, Inc., DBA Indus, the Braintree Mass. It's on the third, the third and fourth pages.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's in the documents that were attached.
Right. So the documents were, were, were Nagatuck awarded it.
Yep. Thank you.
To that contractor.
And while that's not in the motion, if the council prefers to add that to the motion, we can certainly do so. Other questions or comments? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the budget amendment requests with an adjustment being made to the approved January third, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two budget modifications that were required to achieve a zero mill rate increase for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two in the city comptroller's memo dated May second, twenty twenty-two, pending Board of Finance approval. That's a mouthful. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Hona. Right. And is Robin on the call?
I am, but apparently I can't get my video working.
That's all right. So do you want to just talk a little bit about the, we, we covered this adjustment and then when you went into the line item to make the adjustment, those funds were just not available. So we're finding other line items to fill that budget amendment. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, we, when I, when I did review, I noticed that we didn't have enough of a savings between all the departments. So as I was reviewing the remaining pieces of the budget, I noticed that there was a budget allocated to the FICA for outside duty. And since we no longer carry those expenses in the general fund, I thought maybe we could use those funds to cover that portion of that zero-mill adjustment. And then the other two, the other entry is just that we had budgeted for facilities, our facilities director in Department Five, rather than the department that he is being expensed to. So we were going to do the budget transfer for that to cover those expenses.
Thank you. So I'm going to paraphrase.
Cover.
When we did these budget adjustments and we did these back in, we did these in, I think, November.
January, they ended up being approved.
It was January, thank you. One of the line items that was identified as an area where we could move twenty thousand dollars out of that line item was a reduction in copier costs. And as Rob, as you heard Robin say, when she went into that line item, those savings were not there. So that's when she went fishing to locate other line items where that twenty thousand dollars could be re-appropriated. And those, those line items were the FICA in the extra duty.
Yes.
For the twenty thousand dollars. And then the other adjustments that are in her memo are directly related to budgeting for our facilities director under City Hall and, or City Real Estate and moving him into City Hall. And the advantage of doing that now is as we look at the fiscal year twenty-three budget, you'll see that those line items match up now. Did I help clarify that at all?
Thank you, sounded great to me.
I know. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendations of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated in the list dated May second, twenty twenty-two.
So move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Seconded by Councilwoman Hona. Questions on the motion? Or the memo? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer usage refunds indicated in the list dated May second, twenty twenty-two.
So move.
Seconded, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Menicia. Questions on this motion or memo? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Paul, you're still in the room. Anything to add this evening?
Nothing else, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Carol, anything from the city clerk's office? I see Attorney Michelle is on the call.
Yes, Mayor. Very briefly, there is a, something I want to just report to the council, there's no action needed. The council, as you recall, authorized that we commence a foreclosure sale of property on High Street. The city foreclosed some property and we ended up owning a residential property over on High Street. The city then was, through the city, the city council again, authorized that we go out to bid or an auction through the purchasing department to sell the property. We have since received a, a bid on that property and it will be sold. Prop, the, we're in the process of arranging for a closing and the proceeds of the sale will be in excess of forty thousand dollars. That was what the bid came in, in after the auction. So there's no need for the council to authorize it. They already basically did that. The rest of this now is a ministerial action. The mayor has to sign a deed and a few other documents and we will have a closing, I'm hoping, within the next, next week or two. That's about it, unless there's any questions.
Questions. Thank you, Vic.
Yep.
Bill Mayers is on the call. Anything this evening, Bill?
I, I don't have anything, Mayor. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Thank you. And Robin, is there anything else you wanted to add this evening from the comptroller's office or finance department?
No, nothing.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move into item twelve, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayors and members.
So move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hona and Councilwoman Riwett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Starting, starting online, anything this evening, Councilman Oliver? I'm going to take that as a no. Anything, Councilwoman Waldron?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Hona?
Just had a question. I know Mr. Simmons isn't here. I don't know if you have any info that you could, but Mr. Hayes brought it up and then I saw the postings for the jobs downstairs locking in. Is there any luck hiring lifeguards that you thought that were doing on staff?
So an aquatics director was extended an offer and we are funding additional training for the aquatics director. We continue to seek lifeguards. It's a challenge and we're not the only one, I mean, everybody. And as Mr. Hayes alluded, we certainly are offering, you know, more money and incentives, including we'll pay for your training for certification. I recently did a quick little video with Mr. Simmons that went out on social media. What we do know this year is even if there is a slim staff of lifeguards, the splash pad can be opened. And if we have to open the pool with limited hours, we will open the pool.
That's what I was thinking.
Absolutely. Yep. So fingers are crossed and anybody who's interested in getting certified, there's a course right now at the YMCA that's, that's available.
Now, if there's something like you can get trained to be a lifeguard before you're old enough to work, but you still have to be sixteen to work, right? Because I know there, there were, I know some lifeguards that got trained, I want to say fifteen, and control, maybe summer camps can hire them. There was something around that. I'm looking at you because you have swimmers.
Well, I know, well, it's, times have changed, you know, but they certainly got their junior life, they were, hit their junior lifeguard. But that actually, one summer while they were in California and then you can get your regular lifeguard. But I don't know what the age requirements are anymore.
I'm assuming we have to get at least sixteen anyway, right?
Yeah.
That doesn't help us if we have some like, really fifteen-year-olds.
I know.
You got to recruit.
I was just going to say, for camps, I think there is.
I know a little bit about lifeguarding. I was a lifeguard for over fifty years. Yeah, and the boy scouts, they have their own certification, but they're even, their, their minimum age is fifteen. Okay. But, yeah, in the old days, they had junior life saving, senior life saving. That's what I started out with. But for the most part, I think it's sixteen to take the course. But then it's not just the age, it's the physical part of it, you know? You've got to be able to do it.
Keep some money.
So, yeah, you, you don't take just anybody, so.
And I'll get better answers for you. I'll get you an answer. I, sometimes I think with camp counselors, you are allowed to take a camp counseling or a camp physician, but I'll have Mr. Simmons get you a better answer.
Yeah, I know there's something about it, but I doubt, you know, what's before sixteen.
Yeah. All right, Councilwoman Menicia.
No, nothing, Mayor.
Councilwoman Riwett?
I think to that point, particularly with the lifeguards, it was a lot of frustration last year. And I have seen far more marketing and, you know, opportunities, you know? It's just, it's for anything, when you're trying to hire somebody for ice cream, you know, it's hard, really hard marketed, particularly for that age group. The only thing I wanted to add was that we had our first, you know, subcommittee for ARPA. Maybe you had it on your agenda.
No, go ahead.
Yeah. So we had our first meeting this morning. Mayor was able to review the entire ARPA plan and then what our, what our challenge is. We were hoping to, I know we wanted to hopefully get approval of that scoring. We didn't add it to the agenda tonight, so I know they're anxious to get that moving so that they can do the mini grants, you know, a thousand to ten thousand. So if I could encourage, if there was a way we can do an electronic vote, I know.
So I think that the decision today was instead of rushing to incorporate the recommendations from the ad hoc committee and then adding it to the agenda, we have another special meeting next Monday and we'll just put it on Monday's agenda. And I think that would move it along fairly quickly. I, I, I was really grateful our ad hoc committee were all available for a morning meeting. That never happens, unless it's a seven AM meeting. But they also have agreed that they will meet twice a month, the second and fourth Wednes, Wednesday of each month, just so we can keep marching this forward and get these funds out. I'm encouraged. And of course, everything that happens with those committees, as you know, comes back to this council, so. Right, I have just a few things. It's that time of year where we're following very closely what the, what our legislators and legislature is doing. One of the things that we sought this year, and you have to forgive me, I'm a terrible copier, two-sided, came out to be, you know, half of somebody else's document. One of the things that we did ask this year, and this was part of our ARPA funding request, was instead of investing a lot of money in the armory building on South Main Street that also serves as our recreation offices and provides recreational opportunities to the PAL program. Seniors do winter walk, walking, treks around the gym. We went to the legislature and requested a legislative transfer of that property to the city of Torrington at no cost to the city of Torrington. I'm pleased that made it through Senate vote on Friday evening. Actually, it posted Saturday morning, so it must have been a little after midnight and passed through resoundingly. I do believe that it goes before the House, if not today, tomorrow. And a fair level of confidence that we have great representation on this matter. I've been in communication with both Representative Cook and Case on this. So it will be nice to, instead of being under a five-year lease with an option to renew the lease, that we will actually own this and be able to invest funds in it that benefit the taxpayers. So pleased with that. Our corporation, no, our bond counsel sent the, she's following these pieces of legislation as closely as I am. The implementer bill was passed out this morning. And in this implementer bill, you will find on pages one eighty-six and one eighty-seven, reauthorization of the high school, middle school project and specifically the additional funding for the increase in enrollment and increase of costs and the inclusion of the central office buildings. And this, I think, is again, a tremendous amount of work that was done and consideration. So very, very pleased. And again, I think Representative Cook has done quite a bit to advocate for all of this on behalf of the city. So very pleased with those two pieces of legislation. Waiting for the, for the state's budget to fall so that we know what our revenues are and we could start advancing to the council a budget proposal to the members of the council that served on the budget subcommittee. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think they, they fell into a good locate, a good place with a recommendation on a strategy for us to be thoughtful in bringing a budget to the council that includes a combination of utilizing fund balance, the internal service fund, and recognizing that that an impact to the mill rates is a very real possibility. So once we get those revenues and we know where we land, I know, I know you are, I know. But I, I will tell you, this budget subcommittee was looking at a lot of work. High needs, you know, police department, fire department, our public works departments. And I'm, I'm again saying that their work is extremely valuable, especially when it comes to listening to those department heads and hearing what we're going to lose if we don't give them everything they ask for. But also finding that balance of where are we with meeting their needs and meeting the needs of the taxpayers? So to that end, May ninth is our first joint meeting with the Board of Safety to review those safety budgets. I will also have for the council, all of the other city budgets for the council to approve. We'll move that into the following meeting, which would be a joint meeting with the Board of Finance to discuss the budget and the impact of the budget on the, to the tax. the budget and the impact of the budget on the, to the taxpayers. And then hand everything over to the Board of Finance for ultimate decision. I do want to just address a couple of the things that I heard Mr. Hayes ask and I'm always a little disappointed that it leaves before we have a chance to talk about it. The communication piece, you know, where he is saying, I can't find anything and not everybody knows to go to the city's website. And even when you get to the city's website, you don't necessarily find everything you're looking for very easily. The things that we have been really struggling with is how to engage this community that a good segment of it is relying on newspaper print. They like it delivered to their door at 8:30 in the morning. Some are relying on Facebook or social media. We implemented the Torrington alerts system so that we can push information out through the alerts. We're, we're doing the best that we can to push this information out. I think that we just haven't found the right combination. However, in all of those locations, we have put out there not only the strategic spending plan, but the survey results of, who else had an opinion on that $300,000 for employee stipends? $300,000, he was asking whether or not that was still in the spending plan. As this council knows, it is not. That was something that was pulled away. And you heard Mr. Hayes ask about all those funding opportunities for a bus stop, for landscaping improvements, for our youth. I'm looking at Councilwoman Rouette as I say this. Those are all the things that were talked about with the grant, those mini grant opportunities. Every one of those organizations will have an opportunity to come and submit a proposal for spending through those grant funds. So I, I'm, I'm confident that this council's made a lot of the, a lot of good decisions on how to push those funds out for that, that use. Bulk waste, I, I will tell you, this is something that across the board, it's mixed, it's a mixed bag. Yes, you know, I drive, if I myself driving the long way everywhere just so that I can check out those neighborhoods, that I might catch wind of the fact that there's some bulk waste that's been sitting on the curb for a week so that we could do some follow-up. I've had meetings with our Public Works Director and our Recycling Coordinator. They're doing everything they can to keep pushing that information out. Non-compliance results in a ticket delivered to your front door. If there's still non-compliance, a second ticket to the front door. If there's still non-compliance, the police department then would send a patrolman to the house for the enforcement piece. It will take a little bit of time for all of that to, to catch on. In the meantime, through our BLIGHT committee meetings, we were discussing this and our tax collector, Lana Gosley, suggested that we send notices out in our tax bills this year. That tax bill goes to every house, every property owner, every taxpayer. So we'll do a reminder as to how this bulk waste permitting works so that they have something they can put on the refrigerator and remind them. Yes, yes. Thank you. Three-sided bus stop. I, I, I so appreciate him. I, as a kid, when I would do CCD after school and I'd have to take the candy striper home, there was always a little three-sided bus stop that I could, it was right here on City Hall Avenue that I could sit in when I was waiting for the bus to show up. Our problem with those three-sided bus stops is they became my tiny home for some homeless people. So it's a challenge for us to find that safe, covered area and policing it. It's not to say that it can't happen, but those are the things that we are dealing with and trying to resolve. And of course, that's an ongoing conversation with the Northwest Connecticut Transit. And as far as stocking the river with fish, really pleased. I wish I had, I was trying to find the picture, deep just stocked the river. So I think anybody who wants to drop a fishing pole in there, probably, it's like fishing in a barrel right now. So get your pole out fast. I think that's about it. Our legislative session ends, I think, midnight on Wednesday. I'm grateful our, all of our representatives have really been working very hard to keep in communication with me. Oh, there is one more. I did pass out. I hope everybody got it. An invitation on May 11th, there will be a VIP tour of the Penrose Building. They're 75% complete in construction. So if you're available, I know that the, that the owners and contractors would be thrilled to show off what they've, what they've been able to accomplish in less than a year. That is it for my talking points, unless you have questions for me.
When you mentioned that we could send something out on the bulk waste to the tax bill, can you send like something reminding them about the program?
Yes.
I mean, can't be too many words, but like you make more of it.
So we did, we did a mass mailing a couple of months ago. Yes, we could do the alerts also. And I will add that with the planning and zoning is moving forward with developing regulations for cannabis retail and, and cultivation. And there is a piece of legislation right now that is modifying that cannabis legislation, fixing a little bit of a loophole on the gifting that somebody was quite creative in taking advantage of, but also that legislation removes the cap on how many retail facilities we can have in a community. So we've also decided that we will send the notice of that public hearing in the tax bills as well, so that there's ample opportunity for the public to give us some feedback. So, yeah.
The only thing is, I know how two days left of our legislative session, if it passed for the Senate and not the House, we could just like text, you know, our legislative body to say, you know, because it's easy to get lost in the, in the sauce, which I think.
Because I think they just, they just dropped the budget this morning or last night.
I spoke with, yeah, I spoke with four of the five. And yes, all, all four, although Senator Whitco's obviously already voted on it. But Representative Cook and Representative Horn actually did a amendment to it because at, at one point on the, you're talking about the.
Talking about the armory.
The armory. Yeah. At one, at some point, they were actually looking for consideration to be paid. And so Representative Cook and Horn sponsored the amendment. Representative Case communicated with me that he was also aware of the amendment. And so, yeah, those three are, they're all over it.
I'm sort of surprised it's just not in the implementer bill, you know, particularly they go a lot of transfer properties.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's odd. Even when it came out of committee, there were a lot of questions. Came out of committee, I want to say 13 in favor, five opposed. So these aren't slam dunks. This is, you know, it's, it's hard for the state to give up something of value. OFA put a value of $1.4 million on that building. I would say that it's not worth $1.4 million because it needs about $1.5 million of repairs. And I think that was one of the arguments that, that our representatives were making. But it is odd that it ended up being a standalone bill.
I don't mind texting whoever.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, very. I'm feeling confident about that one. When you look at the Senate vote, it was all in favor. There was no opposition to making it happen.
That's easier than the House.
I think they're both hard right now.
Well, it's just.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions before I go into the next agenda item? All right. Moving on to item 13, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public for comment on agenda items. Thank you, Carmen. Councilwoman Manichia?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone from the public, agenda items? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Seconded by Councilwoman Rouette. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?